As I was working my way through the university, so I was nineteen years old. The year was nineteen seventy-two, which was just a fabulous year to start in television there because I got to meet some very distinguished people and one of the first to come into our station was Margaret Chase Smith. And what we would do at that time, the three stations in Bangor would have a press conference at one of the facilities. And I remember very clearly that Margaret Chase Smith was coming to Channel Two and I I was in charge of the studio as the studio cameraman. That meant I did things like sweep the floor and wash down cables that ran to the cameras and stuff. And I even went out to Frank's Bake Shop in Bangor and got some donuts, which was a pretty classy event I was putting on as the members of the Bangor media came in. And I I was standing right up by the front door when Margaret Chase Smith came to the station. And my memory of her as a, you know, eighteen-year-old with just more energy than anybody in the world was she seemed tired. You know, she she didn't seem fired up for the campaign. She didn't seem to like kick the door open to want to come in and earn some points. She just kind of politely and humbly and quietly came into the building and I I said something to the effect of Senator Smith, I got some donuts. Would you like one or something? You know, and I just, it kills me now to think of the way I greeted her with the, you know, as I said, I'm gonna say I was just like, you know, just, I just, they should have kept me from dear old Margaret Chase Smith. And, um, you know, she came in and did the press conference, but you know, I was thrilled, you know, bigger than life. Margaret Chase Smith, who of course has been born in nineteen fifty-three, she'd been in the Senate throughout my life and you know, it was just a thrill to meet her. And I met her on probably three or four occasions, you know, when she came to Channel Two that summer until November. And what I what I remember about the race was, you know, what really happened to her at Colby before I got to Channel Two, but she went to Colby and got beaten up kind of by the by the by the folks there. And, um, you know, and of course, the campaign of Bill Hathaway, who I later knew, Bill Bill was after her. And you know, the two people that I remember who were opposing Margaret that summer were Brownie Carson, Carlson, who, you know, ended up in the legislature, was an environmental leader. He was at Colby on the fateful day. And of course Angus worked for Bill Hathaway in seventy-two. And I've talked to Angus about about that campaign. So, you know, and my thought today is what if my mentor and friend Bud Levitt had stood up for for Margaret? Like I jumped into the fray for Susan, would Margaret have been around till nineteen seventy-eight? Who knows? But it was certainly an interesting summer for a wide-eyed eighteen-year-old. It was just beyond my wildest expectations to even, you know, be close to Margaret Chase Smith and to get a feel for what she was as a person. And she was dignified. She was she was kind. And it's an honor to have met her.
You just mentioned the nineteen seventy-two election, which is the only election she ever lost. And let's see. I had a photo here. I had a photo of her from the seventy-two election, which is a photo was a photo of her with Bill Hathaway, but it doesn't seem to be coming up right now. So you just alluded to the fact that you got involved in the recent election, which back when I invited you at the beginning of last year wasn't even on the radar. Uh, but it's something people have asked us about. So can you talk about how it came to be that you got involved in the recent election?
My wife worked for the Maine Association of Community Banks way back in the eighties and nineties. And occasionally Susan would come to speak to bankers. And so Pam knew Susan when she was a staffer for Bill Cohen. And when Susan ran for governor, I think in ninety-four, Pam said, oh, I know her. She is so nice, blah, 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 blah. So that campaign goes on and I may have met her in ninety-four. I don't know. I covered election night in ninety-four, I covered the attorney from Augusta who came in second. Can anybody give me that name? It'll pop out here in a second.
For what race?
Uh, the governors of the Republican nomination for governor. He was attorney from Augusta and still active, I think, probably in his late seventies. I'll I'll think of he was favored in that race and Susan upset him in the primary. But I would have met her sometime that summer ninety-four. And and but her, she lost that election and then she went to Hussin College then to run the Center for Family Business. And my sister was an administrator at Hussin. She had many jobs at Hussin. And I think at that time she was Director of Student Activities. So Susan's events at the Center for Family Business fell under the auspices of my sister. And so they became friends, even though my sister is very far left. And, um, uh, but they became great friends. And so through my sister Julie, I met Susan Collins in ninety-four to ninety-six. And and we kind of became friends. And, you know, the friendship evolved down through the years because Julie, Julie almost, Julie would took a leave of absence to work for Susan in ninety-six when she won her first Senate race. And each Senate race thereafter, at times doing things like running the Bangor office and is a close confidant and a friend of Susan Collins. And so I could know Susan through Julie. And so, you know, the the relationship went on and life went on and Julie would work for Susan each campaign would get a leave of absence from Hussin. And so when the, about two years ago, and David, I don't know if you're on camera, but saying that, you know, you're starting to see things about the next gubernatorial election in Maine already, that kind of thing was happening in Maine. And one of the things that I noticed were the bye-bye Susan bumper stickers. You know, I didn't think they were very classy. And the amount of money coming in from out of state. And I'll I'll call them professional trolls, professional activists who are already hired by out-of-state money to form quasi-Maine organizations, which I thought were uh demeaning Susan and attacking her character. And if you don't like the Kavanaugh vote, that's fine. Vote against her. If you don't like, uh, oh, some of the other things that she's done, fine, vote against her. But Susan Collins, like Margaret Chase Smith, is a decent honorable person. And attacks on her character, things like she doesn't care about Maine anymore and stuff like that there, I thought were pretty dirty. And so I started getting angry about the fact that it was out-of-state money, out-of-state interests, uh, pretending to be in-state interest and and attacking her personally that I didn't like. I didn't like the fact that they were protesting at her home and that the media wasn't commenting on that. You know, stay out of my yard, you know? They sent white powder to her house. You know, it's kind of, that's not a joke. That's when that's happening to you, that's serious. I've never had that happen. But I had some things happen even at my house that I I take very seriously. So there are things like that happening. And I said to Susan, you know, if if this gets close and you need an endorsement, I'll give you an endorsement. I retired from TV. And she seemed to need an endorsement by October. But I think she had some things going for her that Margaret didn't. And one was she fought back. She she accepted, Margaret didn't accept campaign money, right? So there was, there was no advertising. So when you just hear one side of the story for a long period of time. And so I just tried to come out as a reasonable, I'm a moderate voice. I'm a pro-choice person. I'm a, I'm a pro gay marriage person. I'm I'm a moderate person who's kind of, I think, a social moderate to liberal to a fiscal conservative. I think we've got to do some balanced budgeting, budget balancing at this one point nine trillion we just spent. I was with Susan on that, six hundred million, six hundred billion, excuse me, seemed more appropriate than one point nine trillion. And here we go again. So I'm very pleased with what happened. I think that Susan's record was important. I think her staff was important. I think her record of serving Maine was important. But I didn't stand up because Sarah had come from out of state. I stood up because the money was coming from out of state. And I thought the way it was being utilized was not sporting.
Thank you.
And I'll, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody about that at any.
Uh, John has determined that it would have been Sumner Lippman's whose campaign you were.
Sumner Lippman is correct. Sumner Lippman. I I was at, I was working that night and even though I was a sports guy, they would put me out on political campaigns. And I covered the Sumner Lippman campaign that night. And they were narrowly beaten something like twenty-three percent to twenty-two percent. Yeah, you know, that at that time.
Barbara Harvey pointed out, then in the general election, Joe Brennan won the election.
No, Angus did. Oh, yeah. Angus Angus was the, uh, you know, it was Angus versus Joe versus Susan. And the numbers were something like.
Oh, right. Because it was a three-way race.
Right. Thirty-eight, thirty-five. And Susan only had twenty-three percent of the general election too. So she didn't, she didn't do very well in that election. I'm gonna try to close out of a chat. If I go away, I'm back. I would come back. Yeah. So it was thirty-eight, thirty-five, thirty-four. And in fact, she won a three-way in ninety-six, beating, um, Robert Monks and beating Joe, right?
Well, um.
We're on the wrong person. This is the Margaret Chase Smith Library. But when Susan won the Senate race, she beat Joe and Robert Monks.
And and Margaret had beat Robert Monks in the nineteen seventy-two Republican primary.
That's where he emerges. And does everybody remember Bob Monks? I mean, he was a, I thought he was a, he was a, I thought he was a really preppy guy. And he was a, you know, I mean, he was a wealthy man. Nothing wrong with that. That's what I'm trying to become. And he, you know, he'd he'd been places and he knew things. And, um, and but he was, um, I thought he was distant. I thought he didn't have a good relationship with people. And when you look at Susan's returns, you know, she's she's beating Sarah three and four to one in the county and up, you know, Lincoln North and, you know, west, west of the coast. Uh, if you if you look at the town-by-town results, which are very available on the internet, Sarah takes the coast except Wells up to about Hancock. And Susan takes everything inland except Carabassett Valley and Newry. Uh, Sarah won Newry by a vote and Carabassett Valley by like twenty votes. And the rest is all whatever color Republicans are red, I guess. And so in, I don't think Bob had a good relationship with people. And and one of the things I said to Susan during that campaign, because I knew her by then, is I don't know Bob Monks. The only times I saw saw him were once when he came to the station. And once when Rod Bannister came to kind of greet runners at Joan Benoit's road race, Joan Samuelson's road race. So, you know, he would come out for Roger Bannister, even though he lived in Cape, but he didn't come out when we were just running. And so I I thought she had a good, good chance because I think, you know, if you can connect with people and have personal relationships and march in those darn parades and, you know, eat those ice cream cones, I I think you pick up votes every time you do it.
Did you have any reservations about getting involved in the campaign?
Yeah, I knew I would lose some goodwill. And I think I've lost some goodwill and I'm sorry about that. But I I still think Maine elected the right person. I mean, I think Susan is a moderate person. I think she's trying to represent all of us in the middle. And if you're far left or far right, you know, she's probably not your person. Uh, but, uh, you know, yeah, I I my life has changed. I can't endorse products. I had a, I had a very nice offer to endorse something and, uh, you know, that has gone away. Uh, but, you know, I I knew what I was getting into and, uh, I'm not a victim. You know, I'm not into being a victim. And, uh, what happened, happened.
Some of the reaction has been to your getting involved?
Many people, first of all, and people I respect. People like Admiral Craig and who I've not heard from, but a number, surprising number of people, both Republican and Democrat, have called me up and said, I can't believe you're doing what you're doing. And and one, one person who ran for statewide office and lost, who was a Republican, uh, I happen to have his name on my iPhone from when I was a reporter. And we're not close. He's just somebody I reported on. Uh, I picked up the phone and he said, you got balls. And I kind of appreciated that one the most. Because, um, you know, I, you know, I took a beating and I still do. I mean, check my Twitter feed. I'll write something about the Red Sox and somebody write in, you know, ask Susan Collins, she knows everything or or some really nasty things involving the F-word or just in just awful. And I, and I would like to say, left or right, you know, the trolls, you can't identify them. They're not people. It doesn't say Brenda Richards and then, you know, Bill, you know, go F yourself. It says, you know, brown-eyed Mustang, you know, I mean, where's this person coming from? Who is this person? Why is this person saying this? Are they being paid still? Are they, you know, is it, you know, is it, I mean, I, and I, it disappoints me when the media says this happened today and the Twitter sphere lit up. The Twitter sphere is paid for by the by the left and right. We don't really know what the Twitter sphere is or who the Twitter sphere is and and what their agenda is. And so, you know, there are a number of professional activists, I'll call them, who are very active with false Twitter handles and they have minions with Twitter handles. And uh, when you step into the public eye now, you you have to step into that domain. And that's unfortunate because I bet there are a lot of good people who are both Democratic and Republicans who are not getting involved because who wants to put up with that nonsense? You know, I did it. I just did it because I thought what was happening was wrong. And I, and I, I too remembered Margaret Chase Smith in nineteen seventy-two and and Bird Henry and some people like that that probably would have wanted me to stand up. So I did it.
Did you anticipate that sort of reaction?
Yeah, yeah.
You knew what you were getting into.
Yeah. I was seeing it. I mean, I was seeing it. I mean, you know, look around at that campaign, how it was going. And I don't think it was most of the Democratic voters who were doing that. I I've, I'm right now in the Democratic Party because I'm, I was very uncomfortable with President Trump's rhetoric. I mean, you can't say that. I I wasn't that uncomfortable with some of his programs, but you you can't behave that way. Uh, I don't think and being being in public life, you shouldn't behave that way. And again, the media uh, is, is the mainstream media, as far as I'm concerned, has pretty much lost it. And this, uh, I don't know what it's called, advocacy journalism or whatever. Give, let's have the facts on left. Let's, let's have a fact. We, let's look at that one point nine trillion we just spent. Or let's look at H R one. Now, what's really in that? There's, there are more than two sides. You know, there's twenty sides. Let's be talking about it. Let's get a di- a dialogue going. It might be more than a dialogue, a dialogue going. And let's discuss things and work through these issues together. You know, certainly. Well, for example, I'm retired. This this joint's paid for, so I'm not taking any money out of my 401K. And fortunately for me, we've worked hard, Pam and I, and we, you know, we have enough money to live on. But I didn't take any money out of my 401K because I'm young enough. I don't have to and some things like that. So I'm under the threshold. I got a check for fourteen hundred dollars. I shouldn't have. Now, you know, you know, the waitress who served me coffee today, she probably should have gotten eight to ten thousand. You know, she's a frontline person. She hasn't had her vaccination. You know, the the people at Shaw's in Hannaford, they should have gotten more money than fourteen hundred. Fourteen hundred doesn't lift anybody out of poverty, I don't think. And so I would have rather seen that that money, you know, more directed. Now I'm talking personal politics. But, you know, just because, you know, you're retired. You know, if if you're retired and your income is stable and you didn't lose anything from the pandemic because you weren't working, why should you have gotten a check from the government? Conversely, if, you know, one of you had to stay home to take care of the kids and, you know, you should have gotten more than fourteen. So I'm renting now. I'm sorry, David.
It brings to mind, have you considered running for office?
Yeah, but I, you know, I wouldn't. No, I haven't really. Because Charlie's here. Charlie's ran for office. Uh, I, you know, I'm interested. How does, how does that affect one's life? I mean, you know, no, I haven't. I'm, you know, I'm sixty-seven and we've got to know, I I think the interesting thing is Angus will be eighty. And Angus, I think, is a great guy. I I like all of our our politicians. I like Janet. I like Paula Page. Uh, you know, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, I mean, I'm still younger than our whole delegation, I think, except Jared.
Uh, so one of the final questions in this segment that I wanted to ask is you you've seen as a journalist Maine politics for over forty years now. Uh, and you you may have recollections even before you were formally part of Maine politics. Have you seen them change in that half-century? And if so, how?
Yeah, I think it's gotten, I think it's gotten pretty ugly. I mean, I I thought it was somewhat cordial in the uh seventies and eighties. And, um, you know, I mean, I don't know, I can just tell you about the people I met. Bill Hathaway, I thought he was a great guy. He was was a World War II bomber pilot. And, um, I interviewed, I interviewed Bill probably ten years ago. We went down to DC to do it. And and we had a, we had a lovely talk. He liked to play golf. He was eighty and had shot eighty-one that day. And his goal was to shoot his age in golf, which is one of the more, you know, lofty goals in golf is to shoot your age. Not many people do it. And the funny thing about, we had a nice talk about things. And he told me about that seventy-two campaign. He told me also about the seventy-eight campaign. And and he felt that in his seventy-eight campaign, I didn't think he had much of a chance against Bill Cohen. I thought Bill Cohen, I think it's easier to come out of that district, which is two, and run in the first district. And Bill was young and dynamic and he'd had Watergate behind him and that kind of thing. He was pretty dynamic. You know, I think he was going to be a national leader. And I thought he was going to beat Bill Hathaway. And Bill, Bill thought that his campaign had matured to where all the people who were active in seventy-two now wanted to be consultants in seventy-eight. And he didn't think he could get him out. He didn't think he got him out to meet the people and, you know, do the door knocking that he felt had won it for him in seventy-two. And he was, he was a little bit frustrated with the way his campaign worked. But we were, we were probably in Alexandria, Virginia. I don't know where we were outside of Washington at his house. And we were leaving to go up to Baltimore to watch a ballgame that night. And, you know, we gotta get going. Thanks a lot, Senator Hathaway. Really good to talk to you. And he goes, I didn't even offer you a beer. You guys want a beer? No, we gotta get going. He says, you want one for the road? And photographer at that time was Danny Doyle. You know, we were thinking, wouldn't that look good in a Channel Six news car? Driving on the Beltway, sipping on a cold one. And when they, when they, uh, the cops stopped us. And so it's okay, Senator Hathaway gave it to us before we left this house. So, but he was a very cordial, kind, common, I thought decent guy. And I I don't, I don't think he took off politically, but I I don't, I think he represented Maine well. And I, I think, you know, that's the advice I'd give to anybody who wants to run. Uh, you don't make the times, the times make you. So pick the time. And when you think it's the right time, step up and run. Because you, I don't think you can be something that you're not. And you know, if if you pick the right time, you'll win.
Uh, so before we move away from Maine politics, does anyone have any questions for Bill on that topic? Um, you can either type them into chat or you can unmute yourself and ask your question. All right, we will move on. And this is something that I was going to save to the end, but you just brought it up. So we'll cover it now. Um, you know, you're someone who was involved in the media for over fifty years and almost fifty years, still somewhat attached to it now. Uh, and how would you say the media landscape in Maine has changed over the past half-century?
Well, it's it's changed, uh, in one way. I mean, one, we used to really work very hard to kind of cover both sides of the story. And now I don't think they do work quite that hard. You don't have a responsibility in every two-minute piece to get both sides in there. But sometimes I think one side is missing. The other thing that's happening is just the nature of doing a story is a lot easier. So if I were twenty-one-year-old kid getting on TV again, I would be working on building my social media brand. So I'd be working on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, TikTok, trying to build a brand that when I leave the station, I take with me. And there are very many people nationally, even in Maine, who are, what are they? They're influencers. And and they're doing that. And they're doing it very well. Another thing that has changed is I almost always, unless I was going out to shoot highlights of a ballgame. And for those of you who don't know, I was a sportscaster from seventy-five to ninety-three. And then I became a feature reporter uh, from ninety-three to two thousand. Then I did Bill Green's Maine from, we did three in two thousand and then weekly beginning in two thousand and one. So I I always worked with a photographer. It was just physically demanding to have a twenty-pound camera, a deck, videotapes, two or three battery belts. And I mean, we we had a boat go down one time on a duck hunting story. If the photographer had been wearing his battery belts, he would have died, you know? So it just, you climb Cotidin with forty pounds, you know? You didn't do a lot of that stuff your own. Now, late in my career, I was driving home one night through Cumberland and a helicopter was in a, it was down in a field. It was, had landed, an emergency landing. I got out with my phone and took five, seven-second shots and emailed them to the station. You know, a very different way of delivering the product. And and these kids now are going out and and they're doing live shots by themselves. Uh, they they have DVUs, I guess they're called, uh, digital video units and plug the camera in and you're doing a live shot. And my goodness, I mean, so that really does a lot of things. And it'll, and I wish I had it. It opens up liveliness to a lot of places up north. You know, in the woods, if if you've got cell coverage in Three Towers, you can hit a D V U shot. So in the ability, the stuff's a lot lighter. It's a lot better. The did, the the video on your phone, the digital videos good enough to run on television. It's high-def. And so it's, you know, the the equipment's a lot better, but you're working by yourself. And so a lot of times the photographers especially were smart enough to keep you out of trouble. And, um, one, there was a painter in Maine named Daloff Ipkar, who we all loved. She she kind of came out of the CCC's. Her, her, her mom and dad were artists. I think they were named Zolak. And he was a well-known sculptor. They lived down around a Rolsec. And so she didn't give interviews. And I got one. And I'm, so I'm driving up to do this interview with Daloff Ipkar, whose art I loved. And I was very excited about it. And she'd given me very specific instructions on how to get there. And I was riding with a photographer named Gary Sturtivit. And I'm driving along. I said, you get to the fire station, there's a mailbox on the left. And and he said, and is, does the mailbox have like a barn on it? And I said, yeah. And he said, yeah, I've been there. And he'd done the last interview where there was something like seventeen years before with Cliff Reynolds. So, you know, you've got that kind of expertise with you. They can save you and they can teach you to edit and you know, you're doing something, you're talking to somebody, they got a piece of natural sound, a little burst of sound that's going to take people to the story. You know, you had that kind of mentorship on stories that I I don't necessarily see with some of the kids today. And I I think they're very well-trained. I think they're very intelligent and you know, uh, they, you know, they're coming out of some great broadcasting schools. So so my background was very different. I was a local yokel. You know, we just went to work every day and and learned on the job. So, but I think, I think it's very different. The other thing is, you know, I mean, my politics, I'll tell you, they're moderate. I'm in the middle. I really am. But nobody knew my politics when I was on the air. And I worked very hard to keep it that way. If you held statewide office, I did a profile piece of about you on Bill Green's Maine. And the one person I missed was Tom Andrews, who was a congressman in the first district. He went away by two thousand. And 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 I don't know what he was doing. He was heading up some group. And and he still is. And we talked a couple of times and he was living somewhere, Pennsylvania, something Philly, baby. And we had plans that when he came back, I would do a profile on him. And we never got together. So I did miss Tom Andrews. But other than that, I did every congressman and every senator from, you know, Clinton, I did every governor forward. And when I was a kid, the first, I I do remember Clinton Clausen dying vaguely as a boy. And Johnny became governor. And I remember John in a gray suit with black spectacles, kind of, kind of a happy man, you know? And I I don't know, I don't know his politics very well. But I I worked and worked and I got an interview with John. He had a camp on in the Belgrade Lake somewhere. And I I asked him if I could come to camp. But he was a very formal guy. He didn't want me at his camp. We agreed to meet at the senator. And I can't think of a worse place to do an interview than the senator, you know? But we got a conference room and it's all white walls. And, uh, you know, you know, kind of looking for a place to do it at a conference room table. It's going to be boring. We don't have enough video from back in the sixties. And down the hall came John H. Reed in gray suit and spectacles, kind of going. And I thought, geez, he hadn't changed a bit. And you know, it was a thrill. It was fun to meet John H. Reed and talk about those stories. And one of the stories that he told me was when Clinton Clausen died. Uh, John was at his farm. He was a potato farmer from Fort Fairfield. And he got a call, I believe, from the the PR kind of guy, the 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 media specialist, you know, for the Reed camp, the Clinton Clausen campaign. Now, was Clinton Clausen a Democrat? He was, wasn't he?
Stumped me. We need Paul Mills on.
Yeah, where's Paul? He'd be a better speaker than me anyway. And John told me how, well, he was president of the Senate, who's in Maine is a heartbeat away. And, um, so, uh, you know, I, you know, he he got the call in the middle of the night, two or three AM, from John's, from Clinton Clausen's PR guy. And he knew when the guy identified himself, what must have happened, that he was going to call in the middle of the night and that he was governor of Maine. And so the state police arranged a relay from Fort Fairfield to Augusta, which started like within the hour. And he got to Augusta in the morning and was sworn in in Augusta as governor of Maine. And I, that was the kind of story I tried to collect. Because I just, I'd never heard it. And I, I thought it was wonderful. And then, of course, uh, governors were were two-term governors. John Reed was elected governor for two years. And then it changed to four years. He was elected to four years. And I believe our constitution says you can be governor for two four-year terms. And so John kind of used the technicality, since the constitution said two four-year terms, he would run again. And he'd been governor for seven years and he was going for eleven. And the Democrats were saying seven come eleven, like the, you know, the dice game, the craps game. And, uh, Ken Curtis, who I also liked very much, beat him by, you know, a pretty close margin. And Ken and Ken Curtis became governor. It was fun to talk to John Reed about about those days. about those days.
So I wanna, uh, make sure we have some time to talk about Bill Green's Maine. Uh, when did that show begin?
Uh, two thousand, the Reins Thompson family sold Channel Six and Channel Two to, uh, Gannett. And Gannett and Guy Gannett were second cousins in something like eighteen ninety, who barely knew each other and they had nothing to do with, with each other. So there's sometimes confusion about Gannett and Guy Gannett. Uh, and Guy Gannett was very much a Maine company, Chris Harold Channel thirteen, WGAN. That's Guy Gannett. So, but the Reins Thompson family, because of, uh, going digital and the expense of going digital and, what was happening with teen TV ownership, one of the things that Susan Collins supported was, uh, you could own more than, was it seven TV stations or six TV stations? And so we started seeing operations like, uh, Gannett, like Hearst, like helped me with the names of the companies that now own Maine TV stations. And they're buying up ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five stations. Cost of running those stations was cheaper. And so the family-owned operations like, the, um, uh, Guy Gannett's family, Gene Gannett-Holly, uh, very nice to me. You know, Fred Thompson and, uh, the Hildress, a prime example of a fantastic family that did a lot for the state of Maine. We're a great station, Channel Five. But, uh, the, the Thompson family actually sold out a few months before the, Gannett family, uh, Gene Gannett-Holly did. And so, um, when Gannett, when Gannett bought Channel Six, they wanted to look local. And they thought, how can we look local? And, you know, they, they thought, let's do a local show. And, because they called Color Me Green, uh, we had done a, a environmental campaign called Color Me Green. And, uh, it was, it was music. It was courses in the school. It was PSAs. And they needed somebody to do documentaries. And I'd never done one, but they, I, I volunteered to become a one-man band because I could shoot. They wanted to try one person, you know, you know, one-man bands. Uh, uh, there's a name for it now. That's more dignified than one-man bands. But, you know, a reporter that shot is, and edited his or her own stuff. And a digital, media specialist, I think they're called now, but, but means you, you schlock your own stuff around. And I could do that. And, um, so I, I volunteered to be a, uh, to do green outdoors to, uh, in a thing called My Hometown. And to do four half-hour mini-docs each year, shooting them myself for Color Me Green. And they thought that was, uh, you know, an inexpensive way to plug in that hole. And so, uh, they, uh, I had that experience. I'd done twelve mini-documentaries. And they were looking for a local show. And I, I was, by then I was a feature reporter. So I was kind of, out on my own. I was driving around my own car. They didn't know where the heck I was. I was driving all over Maine. I was having a ball doing green outdoors in my hometown. And I would just show up. And another thing that I did that really helped me was I did, um, a promo. We moved the green outdoors to Monday. And we did a promo over the weekend for the green outdoors. And my hometown went on Thursday. And we did a promo for that. Tuesday was in Thursday. So while I was only doing two, two-minute pieces each week, I, a promo was on every day. So I was getting more face time from these promos, which became more important than the stories. And so, uh, Gannett wanted to do a local show, uh, you know, who we got that's expendable. You know, and they, they trotted me in and offered me a deal. And I, I couldn't believe it. And they thought the show would last three to five years. Uh, what do you want to call it? I thought, well, you know, if I'm only gonna last five more years, you know, what, what, what do I want to call it? And I, I wanted it to be, uh, have my name on the show. And so I, and it was gonna be about Maine. So we called it Bill Green's Maine. And that proved to be, you know, I, as I like to say, I'd rather be lucky than good. Because you can't do Bill Green's Maine with Rob Caldwell, right? Even though Caldwell, even though Rob's a lot better than me, he's my, consummate man. You know, I, I wish I were Rob Caldwell. He's so bright and so handsome and brilliant and all those, things dignified that I wish I was. But, you know, he can't do Bill Green's Maine. So I had him. And, uh, and it, it just, the ratings went well. We, we kind of stole Bud Levitt's theory on a Saturday night. Let's bring the state together on Saturday night. And, you know, and, and, uh, do things. And, and, and I admit, you know, I, you know, I didn't have the heart. You know, just like, I don't have the heart to run for, for office. I don't have the guts to run for politics, you know, for office. Uh, I, I didn't want to rip people up. I did, I'd done it a few times as a young reporter. And I, I didn't like it. I didn't like doing that tough story that exposed something or, you know, maybe, you know, sometimes when you're doing an advocacy piece, you, you know, you, you bring up this point. And yeah, you cover the other side a little bit. But, you know, it's kind of unfair. Fair. I think, I think the real bias in media isn't the actual story. It's the selection of the story. You know, what, what story are they doing? Why are they doing it? You know, that's, that's kind of interesting to me. So, so this was a chance for me to, uh, you know, to brag about the state of Maine. You want to hear one more story, David?
Sure.
Pam and I are Colonial Williamsburg. She's with the Maine, now it's probably, you know, Savings Banks Association of Maine. And we're sitting with couples from Chicago, Washington, and Miami. And they get around, where are you from? Uh, we're from Maine. Maine, you know, with seventeen syllables. And you know, they're looking down their nose at you. And I'm saying, yeah, we're from Maine. And so at that time, DC had just passed Chicago in the number of murders a year, like three eighty-three to three seventy-four. You know, murders in a year. They said, how many murders have you had in Maine? And we just had a record low year at sixteen. And they went last month. Like, no, last year. Oh, we go around the table, you know? You know, and, you know, the kids had done well in, in, in tests. You know, we were like fourth in reading and seventh in English. And, or math. And they were, you know, I know DC and Chicago and Miami aren't states, but it was like forty-eight, fifty and fifty-one because Puerto Rico was ahead of somebody. And by the end of the conversation, they all wanted to move to Maine. You know, and I thought, you know, I, I grew up with kind of a, you know, a inferiority complex about being from Maine, you know? I should be bragging about this place. We have, we have an extremely high quality of life. And I'm just gonna do that. And so in my hometown and, green outdoors, I really did. I started, you know, taking advantage of, um, that. And I, I spoke to a few college, uh, commencements, one four-year school, UMF. And, but all the CCs and, and I, and, and I was looking for ideas, you know? So I get online to steal ideas. And I can't find the guy now, but he's, but he said, take up a hobby that you participate in once a week that makes you as happy as if you doubled your income. And I thought, why, right here in Maine, this is where we can do that. You know, the new ten thousand steps is an hour walk in the woods. I guess that's the new healthy thing. I can go back, walk in the woods for an hour, you know? So, you know, you know, we're, we're really lucky and we're fortunate. And as somebody said, um, I think her name is Mary Pauls, Polis or something. She's now at Bates. But she was a journalist. And she meant this critically, but I, I think it's fine with me. Uh, in Bill Green's Maine, there, there are no heroin addicts. There's nobody driving around a pickup truck with a Confederate flag. It's all positive all the time or something to that effect. And, and I acknowledge that. I didn't do hard-hitting journalism, uh, to watch my show. We were bragging about Maine. And, and, um, you know, that's what I was trying to do on Saturday night. Sorry to rant.
Yeah. Uh, well, it sort of feeds into the next question I was gonna ask. And you may have already addressed it. You know, what sort of stories were you looking for? Ones that could brag upon Maine?
Yep, absolutely. And, um, I, um, the, the formula for the show was action, adventure, get it going, get it outside. So the first segment, we'd be doing something. In my expertise as a, even though I did sports, uh, the leadership of Channel Six wanted to be doing outdoors and recreation. So, you know, I, that was my specialty from the seventies on. And it kind of started with the running boom, you know? So I was running. But, you know, once in a while, because of Bud Levitt's influence, I'd jump in a canoe or try to go fishing or go hunting or something. But my outdoor recreation was much less what they call hook and bullet. Cause, you know, non-consumptive, not shooting anything on the six o'clock news. But, you know, getting outside and, flying kites and anything recreational, riding bikes. And I did do hunting and fishing. But on a very, you know, very, uh, you know, you didn't see much blood on the green outdoors. We, 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 we tended to shoot and miss. So we tended to, you know, uh, put the fish back or something like that. And, but, you know, outdoor recreation and the number one recreation in Maine is, bird watching. So, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, but so that was my specialty. And that was the number one part of the show. Number two was an interview with an interesting painter. And I would, I would try to interview, you know, interesting people. And I, I, if I did a Republican, I did a Democrat. And, you know, so, and so forth. And then the third part was out of the archives. And, uh, the fourth part was usually storytelling. You know, a guy that made clam rakes or, you know, a history piece or something like that. You know, steal, steal stuff that Paul Mills wrote in the Yarmouth, shopping notes. And, you know, he's amazing.
He is. He's extraordinary. He's encyclopedic.
He is.
Yeah. Uh, so in all these years of doing Bill Green's Maine, do you know how many communities you visited?
Well, all. I, I missed six townships. It's fine. We took a Delormo in nineteen and kind of looked at it. And I don't know exactly, but there were six townships and they're uninhabited that I haven't been in. And, um, I, we tried, we took our drive to try to get them. And it was wet and it was late. And I got to jump on a snowmobile. It's easier to get a lot of places up north by snowmobiles. Cause there's snowmobile trails everywhere. And I, and I gotta, I'm gonna drive through them. Now, I didn't do all the islands, but I did all the inhabited islands. And I think I did every inhabited town, just, you know, by virtue of, traveling back roads and stuff. But I, I got, I got everywhere, but six townships, I think.
So in all those years, what did you learn about Maine?
There's more than two. There's more than two mains.
Okay. About the two mains, but you, for you, there's more than two.
Yeah, we all, we all bring our own experience. And so maybe there's one point three million mains. But, you know, it does, to me, there are haves and have-nots. But, um, you know, if, if you got a good job, you know, if you get a job that can, you know, fill your basic needs, you know, heat the house and put a roof over your head and maybe get the kids off to school. Uh, you know, post-secondary school. I mean, yeah, there, there's enormous opportunities here, but very different lifestyles, very, very, I think, very different. We have some very sophisticated people. And, and we have some people living just, you know, the highest quality of life that you can imagine. And then we have people who are, who are working a lot harder. So, you know, and I guess, you know, maybe I learned to respect everybody's story. And, um, you know, try not to condemn it.
Very good. So I'll take another pause here and see if there are any questions that anyone wants to ask Bill before we go into our final segment here. Again, you can unmute yourself. Oh, uh, a Flatlander is asking to define the two mains. So Bill, do you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, I think the two mains, well, yeah, I don't. I don't define the two mains. Uh, you know, one of the things that I got active about and tried to change, there was a time when they were trying to do two area codes. And I thought that that would have been a big deal because that would have identified two mains. But I, but I, I think, you know, if I were to try to define it, I would, I would try to define it with, do you have a good job? And I go back to Joe Brennan, Charlie. Uh, he'd come in with that things, saying, fish piers, cargo ports, potato pack and sheds, you know? And, and a job is a welfare program. If you can find a person a good job, and in Maine, those jobs sometimes have to be natural resources-based. And as we lose natural resources, jobs, it's hard to, it's hard, you know, upstate and inland to, to provide jobs, you know? Uh, and that's why I think what's happening, uh, with the evacuation of the cities right now is an opportunity for me to, to bring people here who are gonna work at home. And, you know, telecommute some, someplace. But I, I think it's all about jobs, jobs, jobs. And, you know, and I, we need them.
You just mentioned natural resources. And you've highlighted that another segment that you were known for is, uh, the green outdoors. Can you talk to us about what the, what you see the importance of the environment is to the state of Maine?
Yeah, I think it's enormously important. And, you know, I, one of the things that's really changed is, uh, access to land. When I was a kid, if it was not posted, you could go there. But also, when I was a kid, there were bigger lots of land. Landowners owned more land. So, you know, to own ten or twenty or forty acres wasn't that big a deal. The house was on the road and the woods were behind the house. And, Carmel and Herman and Etna and Dixmont. Well, now that space is filling in. So there, there aren't as many, homegrown natural places to go out, you know, little, little, you know, boggy fishing holes and stuff like that. And you're not allowed to, you know, to access land. And, and a lot of that stuff now, it's, it's a couple of acres. You know, I own, uh, just one point eight acres here. And, um, you know, I would feel uncomfortable with someone I didn't know on my property. Not that there's much to do there. But, um, you know, I'd want, I'd want to know who was out there because there's one point eight behind me and two acres and two. Uh, there's a stream running through the middle of it. So it's not a, a good place. Yet, when I bought this place in two thousand, there's a big pine tree out front. And there's an old tree stand, a crummy one that someone had built with a, basically a piece of plywood on a, a support. And, uh, you know, as, you know, someone, and the road was a railroad line before it was a road. So I guess in the fifties, the, the, they took up the train tracks and the road went in. So sometime, you know, probably forty, fifty years, before I got here, in a tree stand looking over stream, you know, near the train tracks that maybe you could see. You know, and hunted here. And, you know, you couldn't do that today. It's a, it's a shotgun-only community. And I don't think, and you can't discharge a firearm within three hundred feet of a house, a dwelling. So there, you know, you couldn't do it legally here. So, you know, this was one place that's now, you know, off, off the hunting grid. It's also off the fishing grid. I'd, I'd certainly let someone fish if they want to go down. But, you know, you know, people, people don't, you know, there's just not as much access to land. And that's why I think the land for Maine's future is so important. Every time that's come up, it's been passed enormously by enormous margins. And I think it's important that we, uh, protect access to both freshwater and saltwater places and other nice pieces of land. And that used to be just available.
Uh, so it's a question, uh, which gets back to the two mains and it's of the nature. And this I would think even applies for the many mains you talked about. Do you have ideas of how we can help people see the other perspectives?
Hmm. Um, you know, I thought, you know, in some ways I thought, first of all, I will say, I thought my, I tried to do that with my show. You know, it was okay to, go into Island Falls and, you know, have a, have a roast pizza at the gas station or something. No, I don't, you know, I don't have a good answer. No, I don't. Um, you know, I don't. Because I, I think a lot of times, the, the area, you know, the old Maine is getting bought up by the new Maine. And, you know, you look at, you know, what people, you know, make for incomes. And you look at the price of land and stuff, uh, a, a cape. Pam and I had a cape. We got married in nineteen eighty-six for sixty-three thousand. That we sold for eighty-nine thousand. When we build a colonial in Portland. Um, so that, you know, that went up from eighty-six to eighty-nine, like twenty-five thousand dollars. That same cape now is a quarter of a million. That's a cape in Portland, you know? So, you know, and you look at what a cape in water, you would look at what a quarter of a million buys you in Waterville, significantly more house. I mean, it was amazing to, to look at that. Um, so, and, and then, then that's Waterville. Now you go to, you know, Hodgdon. And I don't know what property prices are in Hodgdon. I really don't. But, you know, that would be, that would be an awful lot of house. So, y- if you make a Portland income, but then decide to go to Norwich Walk, I, I would think you could live very, very well. Uh, if you had good broadband. So, uh, no, and that's, and, 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 and then, you know, take those multiples. You put Boston in that, New York in that. Uh, you know, I, I fish a lot of places along the, along the coast. You look at them and you think, boy, that guy's only there a week or two a year. You know, that's gotta be a couple of million. You know, and I'm sure that there are, you know, there are a lot of people in, in, in the city that are making that kind of money. And so, you know, we have to have access, you know? And I, I don't begrudge anybody buying anything. But it's just the way that money works and the multiples and stuff. So, no, but I, you know, access, access, access. And the other thing, the other thing is urban sprawl. You know, I mean, I, when, I don't like what's happening in a Manjoy Hill, but I like the fact that they're building, building up in Portland that, you know, I see a seventeen-story building in Portland. I think that's just the place it ought to be.
Rather than sprawling out into the suburbs.
Right, that's, that's seventy-five houses, isn't it? Or, you know, whatever it would be, however many units, you know? I, I, yeah. Yeah. And, you know, when I look at what's happening and, you know, it's just happening. I mean, there's nothing is really gonna stop it. But, you know, I live in Cumberland. We don't even have, hardly have a store here. You know, we, we're just building house after house after house. And they're, they're nice houses. They're half-million dollar houses. So, yikes.
All right. So this will be your last call for questions before we start to wrap things up.
What did this have to do with Margaret Chase Smith, by the way?
Well, it's, and it's, the, the connection to this was the Maine bicentennial, to be thinking about Maine, the past, the present, and the future of Maine. And, you know, as someone who covered Maine for forty years, that's what we wanted you to talk about.
Well, I, the, the, let me say something before you ask the last question, that I just think that we have an extraordinary high quality of life here. We have the, the, the water. I, I'm a spokesman for Freedom Boat. I get out on the bay all summer long. We have the 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 water. I I'm a spokesman for Freedom Boat, and I get out on the bay all summer long, spectacular. People sailing out there and just go out there and have a clam dinner. I got a friend whose phone number, I won't give you the first three digits, but the last four are fifteen ninety-five. You know, give me a buzz, you know, five, five, five clam dinner, fifteen ninety-five, and. Elash Wilderness Waterway, we've got Maine Hudson Trails, we've got the Appalachian Trail, we've got the Bold Coast, fabulous hiking down there, we've got lighthouses. We got, we got the Millows, we got, you know, great ice cream and brew pubs, I mean, we got, I mean, gosh, we've got a great place here, and so. It's it's really a place to be celebrated, and and uh maybe, you know, we don't all have an extra zero on our income, but we have that, those opportunities that give us. You know, give us, you know, a a happiness to our lives that I think a lot of people don't get.
All right, that seems like a good place to stop the formal.